I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Ryan Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Debona. Gary Flafferty.
Here.
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 Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Before that starts, I do want to remind everyone in the public that it goes back a few years, back to December of 2016, there were certain policies and procedures put in place over public comment or public participation. I just wanted to reiterate a portion of that policy. Running the meeting, the chair or other council member acting as chair shall have control over the conduct of the meeting. All comments and questions from members of the public, council members, and/or staff should be made through the chair. The chairman has discretion to stop a speaker or a council member if the speaker is being repetitive or becomes confrontational. There will be a request for a five-minute time limit per speaker per meeting. It will be called public participation. The chair reserves the right to ask any individual of the public to leave if they prove disruptive of the process. And there's more to the policy, but I did want to reiterate some of those items. Additionally, we'll be working with the town attorney to review this policy and see if there's any updates that we should include. So next, is there anyone from the public that would wish to come and address the town council? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Actually, if you could come sit right there. And there should be a button that looks like a face that will turn the mic on. Lauren already did it for you. You're all set.
My name is Mark Sanduli. I'm from 21 Pharaoh Road, Wilkett. And I'm here representing Deb Smalley from 760 Middlebury Road in Watertown, Connecticut.
Excuse me, are you not from town? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Public comment is made just for members that live in town.
So I can't talk?
No.
Ms. Smalley has trouble coming to these meetings now because she's been...
So she could put something in writing to us, but...
I have it right here.
Then it could be submitted for the record.
I'd like to put it on verbally tonight to the record if I can.
No, sorry.
Mr. Ramos, would you allow me to do it? Mrs. Smalley's been dealing with this problem for approximately 20 years.
Excuse me, sir. Your mic's already turned off. Public comment is raised just for members of Watertown Oakville. She could speak, or she could put something in writing to the town council and/or the town. Would anyone else like to address the town council? Public comment's only at the beginning.
Al Mickel, 95 Woodvine Avenue. The first thing I usually love to speak about is the public participation. I witnessed a special meeting about Linkfield Road the other night on Zoom, and it was run very professionally, and it looks like the rules that you just mentioned were followed with a five-minute rule and things like that. I also went back and looked at all the boards and commissions to find out how many use public participation. Most of them do. The town council here started public participation back in 2003. As a matter of fact, in 2017, it had public participation at the beginning and the end. And with the thing that you just read, it talked about the guidelines for public participation. In the discussion where those things were first produced, it was going to be debated whether it was going to be a procedure or a guidelines, and they opted for guidelines. I've always thought it was good guidelines and it should be used. My comment tonight is, can we change the agenda item tonight or in the future to public participation? If that's the way we're going, and the lawyer's going to look at it, I've always thought it was a good idea. Now, we have a lot of people here tonight to talk, and I've got a lot of issues here, but I'm going to probably cut it down to a few. So I just covered public participation, and thank you for listening. One of the things I noticed, and I think was terrific, was the budget was put out as line item budget, which I thought was always a good idea, because now you can look at every item and question every item or get comments and clarification on every item. It was also, I think it's also available electronically, which I've always taken advantage of. So I thought that was a nice touch, and I appreciated it. Now, one of the things I'm going to talk about tonight, I'm going to read part of the charter, just little parts of the charter, because I think it's going to be relevant later on.
Oh, Mel just says, remember, five minutes, so...
Who's timing me?
There's a big clock behind you.
I'll be talking as fast as I can from now on, okay? Under Section 602 of the Charter, 603 of the Charter, and 604 of the Charter, there's a section in there that says, "The Director of Finance and Purchasing shall supervise and control and maintain..." It goes on and on, okay, saying, "Town-owned structures. Except such buildings and structures as those that are under the control of the Board of Education and the Park and Rec Department." Okay. Under 603, which is the Department of Public Works, it says, "They're responsible for the control of town-owned buildings, except those structures under the control of the Board of Education and the Park and Rec Department." There's two. Under Park and Rec, it says, "They're responsible for all sorts of things." And number D says, "The maintenance of parks and property, real and personal, under the jurisdiction of Park and Rec." And under F, it says, "The Senior Center." So that'll become more pertinent as I go on here. Now, because this is my only chance to talk, I'm going to go through these nine items as quickly as I can. The town clerk, I have no comments on that. I asked the election people how many elections they're going to have. They're going to have four. Probate, the chart is wrong. It says it's going, South there is going to get 15% and the line item only says 10%. So let's keep quiet, okay, on that one. Economic development, I have none. Under the town council, take the training, use it. You only used $300 of it last time. You've got a lot more to use. Under public buildings, in the public buildings, they have this senior center roof should be under public buildings, and it shouldn't be. It should be under the park and rec, as per the charter, which I just mentioned. It's just a matter of moving it from one line item to another one. The police exterior door, I think they should replace the building, not just the door. And that should come up pretty soon, I hope. And one of the more intriguing ones was a 2024 Ford F-350 with a plow for $25,000. I said, there's a bargain. They look like they cost about $65,000. But I'm just wondering why the public buildings needs a huge truck with a plow on it. I don't know. If somebody could answer that, that would be nice. And the finance department, under the line items, I didn't see anything for the assessor, the tax collector, the treasurer, or the rest of the IT department. And of course, I'm always looking for the audit, too. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else?
Catherine Camer, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. At the last council meeting, a group of residents came to you about an issue with the construction of a group home in their area, and you participated with them in what's somewhat of a question-and-answer session, and then held an informational meeting last week. That's not what typically occurs, as we usually get no response to our public participation. Tonight, there's a group of residents here to question the fact that the council agreed with the Economic Development Commission to have Advanced CT, then was known as CERC, conduct a feasibility study of the Sealy property in Oakville. In 2019, this council approved $15,000 of taxpayer money to pay for that study. I attended the EDC meetings, and I can tell you, none of you in this room, except maybe Mr. Seacrest sitting behind me, was also at those meetings. So I know the reason they wanted that study. And it was being conducted so that when someone wanted to develop the property, planning and zoning would be able to indicate that they would have no problem if they did it in alignment with the study. And that's not what's happening today. And the council should be paying attention to what's happening with P&amp;Z and that property today. After what happened with the first appeal, I would have expected you to pay a lot more attention, because you're not going to want another appeal to be brought against the town. Because after all, under the charter, the council appoints the members of Planning and Zoning Commission, and the council is, quote, "The legislative body of the town for purposes of zoning and planning under the general statutes." Residents of the Oakville area would love a special meeting with the members of the council, along with Mr. Seacrest and Mr. McGrail of the EDC, to help us understand why, after getting that study, you're not backing it with planning and zoning. On a similar note, let me read to you what Mr. Masood said to the Waterbury Republican regarding the appeal. Watertown Land Use Administrator Mark Masood said, "The board's decision to vacate its original decision is unusual, but deemed necessary in this case." Quote, "The attorneys for the town decided that there was enough in the plaintiff's appeal that if it went to court, the appeal might go against the town," Masood said Monday. Quote, "Everybody agreed that rather than go forward with the court case, they would instead attempt to remedy the failings of the original applications." Mr. Masood acknowledged that there were failings in the original application, which is what caused four residents to bring the appeal. Now, I am requesting that the council reimburse the residents' legal fees for the appeal, and I'm going to give you a request for payment. It is not up to the residents of this town to see that a commission does its job appropriately. That's the job of this council. We believe the town owes us the legal fees of $11,163.40. In addition to that bill, I paid personally $3,060 prior to the appeal just for the legal advice, as I was witnessing the issues that were happening with the public hearings. The residents of this town should not be responsible to monitor our commissions and left with no recourse but to bring court action when they fail in their duties. And so now that I'm realizing also that you're doing the five-minute limit, I'm going to also request that you get a time clock that can sit over here, because it's unfair to the residents to not have an idea how much time is going by. And at the planning and zoning meeting, we're getting interrupted. We were given three minutes, and at the end of three minutes, the chairman is saying, "Are you finished? Are you going to finish? Is it about to be finished?" And it really disrupts the people who are speaking, and it also, I would assume, causes the people in the commission to get unfocused on what someone's trying to say. So it would be helpful to all of us, I think, if we could have a time clock, if you're going to time us. It goes off, someone, you know, we have an idea. We can be watching it to see how much time we have. I think it would be a nice idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Donston, 105 Dunrobin Lane, Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. On tonight's agenda, we have items C, D, and E, which are involved with the Park and Rec Department. And as always, I'll be more than glad, along with Lisa Carew, our Director of Park and Recreation, to answer any questions that the ladies and the gentlemen of the town council may have. On the budget review sessions, I'd like to ask that the further communication add a few items. There's a total of five budgets that Lisa Carew perviews every year. It's the Park and Recreation, Senior and Municipal Agent Services, Social Services, the Fuel and Fuel Bank, and Crespec Golf. This way, it affords the residents of Watertown Oakville, knowing that any one of those five areas will be covered in that night, and we'll be there to answer questions. So later on in this meeting, if there are any questions after town manager, Mr. Mark Ramos, presents the agenda item, we'll be more than glad to answer your questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
Make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 6, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion changes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? I abstain. Under Chairman's report, I wanted to mention that we received a letter from Richard Vaughn of the Watertown Bicentennial Gazebo Permanent Memorial Committee, and the communication included requests for additional members on that committee. Moving on, Town Manager's report.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the town council. Just a very short manager's report. I just want to report that our audit, which we had anticipated would have been finished by the end of February, has now been pushed off till March. It was additional items that we needed to provide to our auditors, as well as auditors who were going on vacation at the end of the month, and it was just easier to push this into March. So we anticipate that being completed by the end of March. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to subcommittees.
We're moving into our budget items, and the first item on the agenda is the town clerk's budget.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. I thank you for your time tonight and appreciate the opportunity to review the town clerk's budget. I provided to you a very short Excel spreadsheet that sort of outlines any increases and decreases that I had. Regarding Personnel Services, I have two white-collar employees that follow the union white-collar salary. I do have in there an additional item, which is overtime. There is a strong possibility that the early voting bill will pass this year, so we may need to put that in to assist the registrars with voting. Under Purchase Services, there is a little bit of adjustments. Training, meeting with, travel has an increase of 580. Photographic, an increase of 300. Maintenance, a decrease of 300. Legal and fiscal, a decrease of 75. Memberships, an increase of 95. So overall, the entire budget is an increase of $1,600. On the last sheet, I did provide to you a comparison of revenue that the town clerk's office generates for the town, and I had to compare calendar years, since we're in the middle of a fiscal year. So I compared 2021 to 2022. And with that said, I'll be brief and open it up to questions if anyone has questions.
Anyone on the town council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Did that include the election? That included elections, correct? Who's going to do elections?
Mark, is there anyone here for... Sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry, didn't see you. You're shrinking down in our seats.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Can you move your microphone a little closer?
Oh, sorry. We have asked for an increase in the deputy registrar's fees, a slight increase, as it was noted by myself that currently they're making approximately $17 an hour, a little over. And when I was listening to the TV the other night, I heard an ad for Lake Compounds asking for workers for the summer, high school students and college students, and they're making $18 to start. So we were asking for a bit of an increase so that the deputies would be making about a little over $20 per hour, as opposed to the $17.34 an hour. Many of the increases that we're looking at, the trainings and meetings without travel, both Lorraine and I are new to the position, and we are going to be taking classes to become certified. And these require eight one-hour classes plus an exam at the end. And we're looking forward to doing that within this year, this budget year, so that both of us will be taking them, which will not be happening again. Once we're certified, we're certified. So that's why we're asking for the increase for this particular line item. Printing and binding, the cost of paper has gone way up, and printing has gone way up, especially if we're going to be dealing with this early voting. There's going to be more paperwork involved, more instructional paperwork. So that's why we have asked for that increase. The next increase that we're looking at is office supplies, again, for the same reason. Everything has gone way up incredibly in the last year. And I believe... Do you see something else?
We did decrease the food allowance, $1,000, because it was in two separate categories, and it amounted to $5,000, and we don't really need that much.
It was duplicated. It was a duplication. We had previously been allowing our poll workers at the polls a $10 a day food allowance, and when we asked them, when we asked the town last year, which we were allotted a certain amount to be giving, ordering food in for our poll workers, that previous line item never got deleted. So we're asking that that item, the $1,000 food allowance, be deleted, to be replaced by the $4,000. We had been finding a great difficulty in finding poll workers for two reasons. One, because we were paying much less than other towns were, and two, because other towns were supplying food during the election day, which is a very long day. It's about 15 hours or more in some cases. And just the small, small, I don't know, help we can give them about just having food ordered in, waters and sandwiches or wraps, and some pastries for breakfast, and then the wraps for lunch, made such a huge difference. It really makes the poll workers feel like we actually are looking out for them. So we appreciate that being allotted for us last year. Are there any questions? Yes.
Excuse me, my question is...
Put your mic down.
People that aren't using their mics, if they could turn them off, because we are limited. There you go. Right there.
Lisa said they might pass the bill for early voting. Now, with early voting, does that mean we are going to have poll workers at schools for certain days of the week, for a week? I don't understand early voting. But is it going to impact workers working more than just your one standard?
We're not sure how that's going to work yet, because we don't know what the state's going to decide that we can do. It's going to be hard to do it at the schools, because they're in schools, so that's going to be a problem. We have a lot of trouble just getting the gyms when we need them, and I don't, you know, we don't know how many days they're going to want us to do it, or...
Mr. Chairman, may I further answer that question? So we, the town clerk and I have actually discussed this recently, that we would not be going into the schools. That early voting would be taking place inside the town hall. That's why the town clerk had asked for that additional overtime, so that we can have discussions with our elections officers down the road to see if there was some shared responsibility between our town clerk and our election officials. So it is a discussion that we're going to have down the road as we get further. The bill hasn't even come out of committee at this point, from what I understand, but we're aware of it. We will keep on top of it, and we'll try to lessen the burden for those that are only on stipends.
Thank you.
And in my understanding, the early voting that would be taking place here, the voting as it normally occurs will still be taking place in the four schools, and we will be utilizing the schools as voting locations in the same way that we do now. It would be totally incomprehensible to me how we would say to the schools, "Well, you can't have your gym for a week." So that would be taking place here, most likely in this building. But we have not had any communication with the Secretary of the State's Office about how this will actually take place. As Mark Ramos said, there's been no actual decision that's been made about how this is going to work. So we're kind of in the dark as well.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Marianne?
You mentioned you're going to be certified. Is that done by the state?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. And you have to go where, to Hartford?
I believe these are online.
They're online. They're online classes.
Eight?
Eight, yes.
One-hour online classes, and then there's an exam that we will be taking at the end of those eight classes.
So there's no need for travel to be certified. It's just your time.
That's correct. Yeah.
We do them on the computer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next budget is the probate budget. Mark?
I don't believe that anybody is here for probate.
No.
So...
It's pretty cut and dry.
Yes.
Our cost, it appears to be a total assessment of $7,644.10, by whatever calculation the probate department uses.
The chair? One question, just out of curiosity. I never recall receiving anything like this before.
Yeah, every year we get a calculation, yeah.
We don't get it written out like this, but we get a figure.
Right, but we didn't get it in last year's budget. That's why I thought this was new.
No, we get it every year.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
The next budget is economic development.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joe Seacrest. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for the town of Watertown. I have a feeling I'm not going to take much of your time this evening. My budget is small and limited. If you have it in front of you, minor increases, say, from $100 to $200 and potential... I'm anticipating some potential fees for associations that we belong to, that the dues will go up. If they don't, we obviously won't spend the money. One of the major items is Business Assad and Cost Sharing Program. We're launching that, one this year, and we'll do one in the year we're talking about. It's developing a brochure to send to most of the businesses. We're limiting our first attempt to businesses which face on Main Street, because we want to get from Route 63 and six intersection all the way down. to get from Route sixty-three and six intersection all the way down to the Waterbury Line, all of Main Street and Watertown and Oakville. What we are proposing is, and there is an extensive policy that is posted online, and we're trying to get these people to respond to the online. We will also be sending some personal, some mailers to the businesses that meet that category. We're asking for twenty thousand dollars for that fee, fifteen thousand dollars max for each company that wants to improve their facade. Some of the towns are doing fifteen thousand. Winstead is doing a hundred and fifty thousand by combination. It doesn't mean much for us. What we really want to do is offer fifteen hundred dollars to prove that the town has some skin in the game, if you want to improve your facade on Main Street. It's going to be consistent with other programs that we have, the road safety program, which will be improving the sidewalks, crosswalks, and improving the downtown areas in both Watertown and Oakville. So we're very hopeful that people who have businesses on Main Street would like to improve their facade. And as I say, there's a detailed process for doing it, but we are offering to reimburse them fifteen hundred dollars towards the cost of their facade program. Twenty thousand dollars will take us, if we get ten or, it will take us up to roughly twelve to thirteen applicants if they come in. We've never done the program. We don't know how many people will respond. We're going to urge our businesses to do it and improve the look for downtown Watertown and Oakville. And those are, those are the only questions I have and issues I have for your approval tonight or for your, to comment with you about tonight.
Any questions?
Is there a design that is, is there a design that's going to be approved, so the Main Street doesn't look one business doing something totally different than the next?
Yes. The program that's on our website is very detailed, and it basically says it has lots of design requirements on it. It requires also a sketch, the person who wants to do the facade, a sketch of what it would look like, based on color consistent with surrounding colors. And there's, the United States Department of Interior has published a list of suggested improvements for downtown facades, and that is also included.
I guess as a follow-up with that also, is that, do you feel that, coming from a conservative that I am, do you feel that you put enough money in there?
Is enough money ever enough money?
It doesn't seem like you asked for a large chunk of money to redo that, that look of downtown, and I guess that's what I'm asking.
The original assumption was fifteen hundred dollars would say, the town wants you to improve your facade, we will give you the fifteen hundred dollars if you meet all the requirements, just as a token of goodwill that we're in it with you. The dollar amount was, come up with, we figured fifteen hundred dollars to start. There's no reason why we can't do more.
Well, I hope people take advantage of it.
You all set? Any other questions?
Through the chair.
I thought we'd originally discussed using the ARPA funds for the facade redevelopment program.
I beg pardon.
I thought we talked about using the ARPA funds for the facade redevelopment program.
Oh, yes. This year, there have been appropriated some ARPA funds, so we can do it, one this year, and the request I'm asking for is next year. The ARPA funds for this year, we intend to put out, we're asking for applications from April one to April thirty, or however many days there are in April. We will get all those applicants in, hopefully quite a few. We will get them in, and in the May meeting of the Economic Development Commission, they will decide how complete the application is, how thorough it is, and which of those, if we have to choose, if there are more applicants than money available, then they will recommend the ones that we would choose based on objective criteria. And then they would present our recommendations to Mark Ramo, and if he agrees, he would produce, I guess, send it on to Suzapone for the payment. They also will sign a contract. It's a, it's a pretty solid program, but the ARPA funds are in there for the remainder of this year, which allows us to do the April program. We would like to do another one in the fall with the funds that you folks will triple or double for us.
Okay. That answers my question.
And just to confirm, the ARPA fund, there was fifteen thousand we had from the ARPA funds for the current year?
That's correct. We put fifteen thousand away in the interim. Mr. Seacrest has been working with the town attorney to put the program together. They're going to launch it in March. The anticipation is that it will be successful, and that we could fund the additional fifteen thousand. I actually recommend the fifteen thousand, knocking five thousand off, because we really have no data to see if this is going to be a successful program. If it is successful, then you will get your wish. We will ask for a lot more next year.
This is, excuse me. This is all being done in coordination with the road safety report, so a lot of will be happening in downtown Watertown with the, with the crosswalks, the new sidewalks in Watertown and Oakville, and this will, we hope, will improve the appearance. If it's successful, then we would open it up to other streets and other places, but right now it's only businesses facing Main Street in Watertown to Oakville. And I would point out, I point out to Mark every year, and I'll point out to it again, my salary issue, there should be a one in front of the thirty-five thousand, so...
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Our next budget item is the town council's budget.
There's really not much to go over through the town council budget. We only have the three items. Codification, we still need as we appropriate, as we approve ordinances or change ordinances. We'll need codification money to get those done. We left training with meetings and without travel, that would be the CCM conferences or anything like that, that the town councils may, may want to take advantage of. And special events and programs is exactly the same. That pays for the wreaths that we do for all the ceremonies and any other small ancillary money that you may need throughout the year.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on.
The next one is public building.
Lauren, can you turn their mics on?
Can you leave this chairman and council members?
One second, let me get your mic on. There you go.
Thank you for allowing me to show my budget for the public buildings. As you can see, I've pretty much requested an increase in every line item, and that has to do with increases that we have all been dealing with in our lives. Electric bills have gone up, our gas and diesel and fuel bills have gone up, so has the town's. Water bills have gone up. Our service contracts for everything that we have has gone up, HVAC, generator contracts, everything goes up every year. So supplies and materials has increased greatly in everything we have to purchase. So my budget is a big increase this year. One of the biggest reasons for the increase is we have a lot of buildings that need a lot of work in this, in this town, and I'm starting to go with my building maintainer, go through the buildings and determine what really needs to be done today, what can wait, what can wait five years. We've pretty much gone through every building we have to determine what we can wait and what really shouldn't wait. And as you'll see, as we start, this is a maintenance garage where my maintainer has his office. We store vehicles there. Some of the public works trucks are stored there. And it was built in nineteen sixty, and nothing has been updated in this building ever. This is one of the garages that we're, garage doors that we're looking to replace. We're also looking to get a automatic door opener, which will help, safety-wise, pulling vehicles in and out. This door is not very safe at the time, at this time, and we're looking to replace that. We also have a severe leak in the roof. He actually has to keep a bucket next to his desk when it rains, because water comes in, as you can see, mold issues, and this is just part of the roof that's leaking. The roof is a steel roof. We don't want to replace it with a steel roof again, because it would be twice the cost that we're asking for. But the roof is expensive. We have to have it rebuilt and to get it as a shingle roof instead of a steel roof. But there would be framing that has, is involved also. So it is an expense, but if we don't, we're not able to store things there anymore. As it is, we really don't have a lot of storage for his supplies, because it leaks, and we don't really want to keep things there that may be damaged. So that's one thing. This is a picture of the steel roof. That's in pretty bad shape. The vehicle we're asking for, it's not twenty-five thousand. That would be the first payment. We're going to finance that probably over four years. The vehicle we have now is over ten years old. It's eleven years old. It's not adequate. We're looking to have more of an enclosed body like this one, that he would have more like a mobile office, and this way he's not running back and forth to the building. He could carry more, more things that, you know, rain wouldn't, the environment, it's enclosed, it's different than what we have now. The truck is also used for plowing, so they, you know, they do use it to plow parking lots and things like that. So it would have a heavier duty plow, which would be very helpful. The vehicle that we now have could be passed down to, right now, Cressbrook could really use an extra vehicle, and that would make a good truck for them. It's able to be passed down. It's not, it's not unusable at this point. And, yeah, the prices, you know, this is the least expensive this truck is going to be, because Ford trucks went up fifteen thousand dollars from last year. So I can only imagine next year it's going to be more. It's certainly not going to be less expensive as anything we have here. The next thing is the fire department. They have three doors that really need to be replaced. They're rotting, they're damaged. Some of them have holes in them, they're not keeping the rain out anymore, and they're all custom-sized, so they're, they're an expense. But to see them, this one had to be patched, it's, it really, it's only going to get worse, and it's only going to be more expensive if we let it go any, any further. We're going to try to not have them put the salt and the sand as close to these doors, because we believe that's what's rotting these doors. And it's also happening at the police department. We're asking for a new generator for the fire department. This generator is old. It has cost us a lot in repairs. Right now, we have fifty-five hundred dollars that we have to put into this generator. We put much more into it last year. It's just not worth keep putting money in, into it, and obviously, they need the generator. For town hall, I'm looking, we have awnings in the back of the building, but we have no awning in the front of the building where all the public comes into. When it rains, there is literally a waterfall that comes down in the front of the building. You have to dodge it to get in. When it snows and it starts to melt, it's the same thing. It just comes down in a sheet of water. So we're looking, these are a couple samples that we had gotten. The one on the left is a vinyl, which would have to be replaced. The one on the right is a metal frame that would be hooked into the gutter system, and that one is the most expensive, but it would not have to be replaced. And it's similar to the ones we have now in the back of the building. It would help with the ice coming down, you know, it's a, it's a public place, it's, it gets slippery. We really have to take care of it. And then if we're putting all the salt and sand there, we're going to have the same problem. The doors are going to start rotting, they're steel doors, and the same thing, whereas if we have it covered, we won't have to keep as much salt and sand in that area. And it looks nice, it, you know, makes the public know that this is our main entrance, which is, that's what we're really trying to do. We want people coming in this entrance. It's handicapped, accessible, it's, you know, the best place. We really don't want people going in the entrance by the pillars. It's, you know, it's unsafe for people to be climbing upstairs like that. This is really what we want presented as our main entrance, which we did put new signage up, saying that this is the main entrance. That's another type of awning. This is our senior center roof, which we replaced in two thousand and three.
Yeah, the building permit was for June of two thousand and three.
It was fifteen-year shingles. We're past you with this. The roof is leaking, as you can see, and it's really in poor shape, and this is another roof that's not doing well. The police department, I've asked for a few things in my budget, but I also want to show you things that we're going to have to look at in the future. What I put in my budget was a door replacement. Again, we put in for one door, really too neat to be replaced, but one can wait till next year. The one is a main entrance for, for the sergeants on the side of the building, and it's, as you can see, very bad, and it's, it's also a custom-sized door, so it has to, it's, it's an expense, but it's just not looking very well, and it's not, it's going to start rotting where water is going to start coming in. This is something in the future. We are going to need a new generator at some point. The generator is old. It's severely undersized for the building. At this time, I believe that only the communications department is the only thing, in which we did find out when we lost power last year, that the communications department is the only thing the generator takes care of, not the muster room, not anything else. And at this time, it's just not adequate to have just communications operating when there's an outage. So that, that's something we need to look at in the future. The other thing for police is the HVAC system, which has really reached its limit of usability, and that's a huge expense. But we've been patching it through for quite a few years. Parts are getting scarce. We don't, you know, we don't know if they're going to have the parts for it next time, and if something, if it crashes, we're going to be in serious trouble. We cannot have a police department without an HVAC system. So if we're staying in this police department, that's something we're going to have to look at sooner than later. This is another thing we're going to have to look at in the future, is the highway garage. I didn't put it in my budget this year, but we have a lot of problems at the highway garage. It's inadequate for what they need. They have a gate that's rusting and falling apart. It doesn't really, it doesn't really close very well. It's not doing very well. The roof, we recently patched the roof there, which was a five-thousand-dollar job just for a small patch, but the roof is going to need replacement at some point if we're staying in this garage. We have windows that leak that are old. They're, they're original to the building, which was built about nineteen sixty, so that's something we need to look at. It's just inefficient with rain is coming in, it's not keeping the heat out, it's not keeping the cool in, and there's quite a few windows, and they're this, this draw that size. And that's it for upcoming and things that I put in my budget that I tried to prioritize as to what we think we need now and things that we think we can hold off for five years, you know? But there's a lot of work to be done for old buildings that haven't really had much done over the years. So.
Any questions or comments from the town council? Gary?
Under your line item, other equipment maintenance, you went up $27,000 on that?
Yes.
What's, what's in that category?
So for other equipment, it is all our generators. So what I did is, that's one line item. I put in money for repairs because I've had to put a lot of money. Like we just fixed our generator here, which is only four years old, and it was $4,000. So everything is so much more expensive. So what's in that is repair, generator contract, inspection of range hoods for the town, our elevator contracts for the entire town, our elevator repairs, anything that goes wrong, our elevator renewal certificates, the sprinkler system testing, our boiler testing, service for our alarm system. And everything has increased. All our contracts have, have gone up. But why it's so much more is I've put money in for repairs in this line item. I never did before, but because they're so expensive. Every time our elevator breaks down, it's $1,000 for someone to come out, just in this building.
All right. And on the roofs for most of the buildings, like, like the maintenance building on Route 6 there, you're saying $70,000 for that.
Yeah.
Are you going to change, like, make it like a pitched roof instead of being like what it is now?
Exactly. Yeah, they're going to reframe the whole thing and then make it a shingle roof.
Shingle.
But it has to be reframed first.
All right. I just wonder, wonder if metal might be better than, than shingles.
A what?
I just didn't know if you're better off with the metal roof than you are going with the shingles.
Well, if, it's not just metal roof. It's steel. And that would be more expensive than actually reframing and putting a shingle roof. And they can't just put a regular metal roof on there. That's what I've been told. This would be the least expensive.
Through the chair. Could I get an explanation about the salaries for the building maintainer and the part-time salaries? It seems like there's a big shift in those numbers.
Our building maintainer per contract is now a, is getting paid at a carpenter's rate of pay. So it was a large increase for him. And the part-time salaries are decreased because we no longer have someone, an employee cleaning our senior center or our veterans park or the pro shop. We have hired a company to do, to do, to do the veterans bathrooms and the senior center. And then I think the, the golf pro is going to take care of his bathrooms there at the pro shop.
Is that in the budget somewhere, the, the company that you've hired?
Yes.
Where would that be?
It's under maintenance landing, land and building. And the cleaning of the vets bathrooms is $6,500 a year. And the cleaning of the senior center is $19,200 a year.
Okay. So is that one of the reasons why that line item has gone up a fair amount? Is there anything else?
That's new there.
Okay. Was there anything else in that one about why that increased?
The other thing is replacing the elevator panel at the town hall. When the elevator was redone, when the town hall was new, they didn't use commercial grade panel. And everything is breaking, all the buttons, as you, if you see now, one of the buttons actually has pushed in. And that's why they, they use plastic, which is not, not what should have been done for a commercial building. So that was like, that's another $8,000 for that. That's new. Also duct cleaning. We, we started cleaning all the ducts. We did the police department. We did the fire department. So now this year I put in to do the senior center. And that's, that's a big expense. That's about $8,000.
Okay. And I had one other question about the building maintenance supplies. I think you covered this already, but that's a sizable increase. Is that, is that really just inflation or?
That, that is mostly inflation. You know, everybody needs things done in their building. And rather than tell them, no, I like to get them thing, you know, the things that they need done. And this year I'm running low on.
Could you give me an example of something? Just, do I have a sense of?
Of what they do?
Yeah.
Anything that breaks in the town, that, you know, that can be repaired, we, we handle. Doors, locks. We've had locks break at the PD that had to be fixed. And, you know, parts for that are very expensive. Anything here that needs to be done that we can get, you know, people want shelves built, we, we do that. At the fire department, there's been a bunch of repairs we made there. Patching roofs, if we can do it ourselves, we do it. I know you've done the police department and anything like that. Anything that goes wrong and things go wrong pretty much every day. Sometimes they're little. Sometimes, you know, it costs a lot for the, for the parts, for the supplies, paint, even painting, things like that. Well, we do that. So every, everything for every building comes out of this budget.
Okay. Thanks. That was very helpful.
Gary?
Just one question. I noticed on your presentation, you said you received a quote for the town garage for 70,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get three bids already? Because if we get a quote, we still have to go out to bid.
Yes, I would still have to go to bid. So I, I only got one quote just to get an idea of how much. And then yes, that would, that would have to go out to bid. So then we would take the best bid.
Same for the senior center too. You got a quote for them.
Everything, everything over $25,000 would go out to bid. But I wanted an idea of how much, you know, these things, these items would cost.
Yeah. My only concern is you asked a company to come out and give you a quote, right?
Yes.
And what happens when we go out to bid later on? This company, everybody knows already what they're quoting.
Well.
I don't know if that's going to be fair to the company that gave you a quote.
Right. And it's probably going to change. I mean, it's probably going to be more. You know, these quotes that I received at the end of last year, by the time we get to July, then I'm sure that company's not going to be quoting that amount. It's probably going to be more.
Thank you.
Gary?
I see you have $6,000 for a defibrillator. Where's that going to go?
Yeah, we're getting two defibrillators for the town hall here. We have one already on the main floor, so we're going to put one on, on each floor. One on the, on the first floor, one on the second floor. And that's including the cabinet to put it in with an alarm and a locks.
Okay.
The presentation you showed us with all the photos, are you able to print that out for us so that we can have?
Yes.
I think we need to have a lot of discussion about everything there that we've seen tonight that we didn't know needs to be done. And it would be helpful to have those locations and photos, et cetera.
Yeah, I could print all that.
Email to us.
I'll, I'll make sure that you get those. If I may, just add a couple of comments. I'd like to thank Donna Ford and Anthony for doing what they're doing. They're actually trying to build capital improvement budgets so that we can understand where our, our buildings are. We, we have not been able to find many records to substantiate how old everything is. So they're actually going out, taking notes, trying to recreate what's there so that we could better estimate how we, we go about making improvements. I also want to note that the company two generator has been asked for, for the last three years in the fire department's budget. I trans, I asked Donna to put this in her budget so that we could keep track of what we're doing for the buildings. So that was removed from the fire department's budget. And as far as the senior center roof, as we move forward our budget, through our budget presentations and we get to Crestbrook, we actually put a claim in through our insurance for three roofs. One is the Crestbrook Golf Course where the building where Sunset is, the Crestbrook Golf Pro roof and the senior center roof. We have had some movement with the insurance company. We may be getting reimbursed for a portion of this. We just have not been able to get those numbers as of this point. So if they end up paying for everything, I'm going to hopefully pull it out of the budget. And if not, we'll leave what's left.
They better pay for everything.
And just for the record, we mentioned, you know, cleaning vets park and a couple of other buildings. Does the billing department clean all the buildings? Or do some departments kind of take care of that themselves?
We take care of all, all the buildings. Police department, the two fire departments. This building.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next budget is the town manager's budget.
So basically, the only changes in the budget was the reduction of the intern line item. So if you recall, the intern was for HR purposes. We were working with the state of Connecticut to have somebody come in as an intern to help us move forward. That never worked out for us. There was also a Blight person who was paid out of that line item. He has since received a full-time job. And I hate to break this news with the chief in the room because we didn't really directly talk about this. But I will be giving Blight back to the police department. We have set up a more streamlined system. We're looking at software that automatically email responses. And it should be a small lift for the police department as we have it set up now. That would be the intention. So I've removed that 20,100. I did put in a social media stipend of $3,500. That would be to compensate the person who takes care of our social media. They do work 24/7 by responding to, not responding to questions, but monitoring the comments that are made in our social media so that we keep a good idea of what's happening. They do spend a lot of time on their off hours communicating with me as we try to monitor that. Other than a small increase on training with meetings without travel, that includes the CCM training, the ICMA conference and CCMO. And I asked for a small increase in special events and programs. My intention is still to get more people in the town to have discussions as business people, just to have open roundtable type discussions to see how things are going in, in the town. And that's pretty much it for my budget.
Any questions?
Mark, the social media stipend, I didn't quite follow you. Is there a person who's currently doing that?
Yes. So Lauren Laporta, who is running our system tonight, she does our social media. So as we set that up, she took on that task underneath her admin assistant job description. It's grown into a, a bigger job than just somebody who sits, you know, and is able to take care of it during the day. There's a lot of, there's quite a bit of time that she's spending off hours. I felt it was appropriate to compensate her in some way. And since I was reducing that line item, it was a perfect opportunity for me to address that issue.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question. What furniture is needed for the office? Or is that just, just in case something breaks or?
It's in case something breaks and you, if you, you see we've overspent and that was actually put into the town council chambers. We bought two additional tables for us in this area, came out of our line item. That's why it was overspent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Next budget is the finance department budget.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so the largest increase in finance is the personnel section. We will no longer have a department strictly for treasurer. That position is now moved into my budget as a bookkeeper two. So that's the main increase for that section. The purchase services, we are going out to bid for our audit this year. The, it'll be going out in a week. I've worked with the purchasing agent on that already. So that rate may go up or down once we get the bids in. I'm not quite sure yet. Everything else is pretty much the same. Office furniture that you brought up, there's no need for anything at this point in my department. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Gary?
You said you're taking over the bookkeeper two position?
No, there will no longer be a treasurer department. It used to be a separate department outside of the finance director. So now that position is no longer here. We now have a bookkeeper two that was added to this one. That's why there's such an increase.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. Sue, I have a question about the assistant finance director.
Yes.
That's, that's a large increase. Was that like a part-time to a full-time position?
No, it's a, it's a full-time rate there contractual plus with the changing, shifting of job duties with the treasurer and the bookkeeper two, there was a bump up in that position.
So a combination of a contractual obligation and shifting of job responsibilities, both of those things?
Mm-hmm.
And do you recall what the salary was of the past treasurer position? Are we saving with this?
Yes, we are. There's, there's still roughly about $6,000 savings with the shifting, yes.
Yep.
Can you explain what the bank fees are?
The what fees?
The bank fees?
So yes, there are bank fees, you know, bounce checks and things like that that occur that have to get paid regularly. So.
Okay. Thank you.
That's not us bunting checks.
No, that's not us.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you.
And last but not least, the health service budget.
Health service is just two line items. We have the elderly nutrition and Torrington Area Health. Those two amounts are dictated by the two different organizations that we get the information from. Any questions on those?
With minimal change.
The elderly nutrition, that's the payment we pay to the NOW program?
It's like the Meals on Wheels?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Saying that's our portion of all the towns.
Or just for the town, for Watertown.
Okay.
Gary?
Yeah, what do we get for the services from the Torrington Health for that 121,000?
Mark can probably answer that better than I can.
There you go.
So I'm, I'm going to take a stab at this. I don't have off the top of my head the exact services that we receive from them. But just to understand, as we went through COVID, Torrington Area Health did most of the work in advising us, creating the policy. We relied on them for quite a bit of, of that. Opioid, opioid prevention, they help us with that. The town has received probably $45,000 to $60,000 in opioid as a result of lawsuits from the state of Connecticut against some of the pharmaceuticals. So we'll reach out to Torrington Area Health to assist us in putting in these programs out into our community to take that money and then put it back for educational purposes, Narcan, free Narcan distribution, things of that nature. And then there's this, it's a portion of the salary of staff from Torrington Area Health. That's my best.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business.
Under new business, I move to appoint Sally Chrisless, 945 Bunker Hill Road, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Aye, abstain.
Three abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to reappoint Alan Mickle, Woodvine Avenue, Oakville, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes? Motion passes?
I move to reappoint Heather Chase, 14 Seymour Street, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes? Moving on to B, I believe Tina Agadi, am I pronouncing that right? Is here to present to us. And she's from the Watertown Foundation.
Good evening. Doing a little marketing here. Good evening Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Rosa, all the council members, and Town Manager Remo. My name is Tina Agadi. I am the President of the Watertown Foundation Board of Trustees. And I'm joined this evening by Sia Colleen, I'm going to make them wave, Vice President and Fellow Trustees, Sue Atkins, Linda Murrayman, and Justin Golden. We thank you for this opportunity to highlight the past, present, and future of the Watertown Foundation as we get ready to celebrate an exciting milestone in just a few short years. The Watertown Foundation began in 1925 when our founding members, led by David Woodward, joined resources to plant the seeds of hope and promise to enhance the quality of life in our community. An original investment of several thousand dollars has resulted in distributions of more than $3 million to hundreds of students and nonprofit organizations. Thank you. And especially during budget season, I thought you'd like to hear those numbers. And this is how our foundation works. Financial gifts from new and current members are invested, and then the proceeds are reinvested annually in our community. This year, we will distribute $170,000 in college scholarships to benefit local students and through grants to schools, churches, and nonprofit organizations. As we approach our 100th Centennial Celebration in October of 2025, the All Volunteer Board of Trustees of the Watertown Foundation is dedicated to continuing our work of connecting our community through giving. But we need your help in three ways. Ready? Number one, can you please help us spread information about the good works of the Watertown Foundation? If you know high school seniors, please direct them to our website during February and March for our scholarship application. If you know of local nonprofits, please direct them to our website during June and July for our capital improvement grant application. And our second request is our goal is to welcome 100 new members by our 100th Celebration. If you are a Watertown Foundation member, we thank you. If you are not yet a member, please consider this as an open invitation to individuals, families, businesses to join your neighbors and community. Together, we can be sure that Watertown and Oakville will continue to be great places to live, learn, worship, work, play, and prosper. And more information is available on our website. Number three, we are gathering input to mark our 100th Centennial Celebration, and we would love to hear from our community, especially from past grant or scholarship recipients. So we invite you to email suggestions for special events. We'd also like to make a community gift in October of 2025. So if you have ideas of what we might be able to do for that, please email us. And all information is on our website, which is watertownfoundation.com. So thank you again for allowing us to shine a light on the Watertown Foundation. With your support, we can grow our membership and resources to ensure that the vision of our founders will continue for generations to come. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for while she's here?
Through the chair if I can. Thank you. No, I can't say anything more than that. But you guys are fantastic for what you do for this community. And I'm one who just joined recently, so.
Thank you.
I'm one of your 100 that just joined.
Awesome.
I'm glad to find more and more about the organization.
Terrific. Thank you all.
One more.
I joined the foundation a few years ago and serve on one of the committees. And the dedication of the people on the committees is just unbelievable. There's nothing that takes too much time, or too much effort, or too much caring. Whatever it takes, the members do. And it's such a great feeling to know a group of people like that that you wouldn't get to know otherwise. So I encourage everybody to join.
Thank you. And we have a Centennial Celebration Committee that we're working on. So please let us know if you'd like to join that. Thank you so much.
Moving on to nine C.
I move to approve the independent contractors agreement with the Crestbrook Golf Pro.
Is there a second?
Second.
In case there's any questions. Would you like to just give a brief overall?
I think it would be appropriate if you could give a brief overview of the question.
Turn your mic on.
Just a quick overview on the contract. There's only two changes that we made in the contract, other than some language. We had our labor attorney look over the language of the contract. We tightened up that language. But our golf pro has done an amazing job over the last year. He asked for two things. One was a $10,000 increase to his salary so that he can hire a assistant golf pro. He, after he did the amount of hours he worked and divided it into his salary, he ended up making a net of like $13 or $14 an hour. So he's done a great job supporting and building our system. And I fully support these two increases. The second increase was just, he had requested that we invest in. Oh, it's also, thank you, a two-year contract. But he also asked that we increase the amount of carts that we have. He asked for 12. We, we came to a conclusion, and it's on the agenda to discuss tonight in addition to this. But it is a revenue for us to have the additional carts. Very simple. They could give the background of what a great job he's doing.
The golf pro for several rotations has been a four-year contract. This year, we felt as a commission that we're going to tailor it back to two. Four years, we felt that it gets stale in the third and fourth years. Golf pros aren't proactive. Quick story, Gary O'Brien, everybody knows in town. Gary approached me three weeks ago and told me of an incident at the golf course where if anybody knows the game of golf, your first shot on any hole is the drive. Have a bigger club, and his head loosened up. He called the pro shop and asked that when he finished the first nine holes, if they could just stop in and quickly tighten it up. You know, and not only did they do that, they drove out and met him on the hole and tightened it up. What do you call that? Customer service. That's the type of golf pro that we got. Didn't have anything going in the shop, nobody was coming in to sign up. Drove out on the golf course and immediately handled that. The reviews are raves about what we've done with the golf pro. And Marty deserves it. He's done it. Not the commission, not the director of parking wrecks, it's Marty. His personality has enhanced the golf course. Do anything we can do to keep Marty, other than thinking about maybe chaining him to the desk so he can't get out of the building. But we, we need to keep this young man. He's the face of golf now, and he's the face of Crestbrook Golf.
Any questions or comments? Turn your mic back on.
All right, in the contract, it says that the contractors in charge of hiring, like rangers and starters and workers?
Yes.
But then on.
No, he makes the recommendation.
He makes recommendations.
Oh, okay. But I just wondered, because on page five, it says that the town makes every effort to bring in 1,200 man-hours?
Right, he can make a recommendation.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, I must have read it wrong. I thought that was, it was his, the expense came out of his, his budget. No, okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, and all in favor, please say aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
I make a motion to appropriate from the general fund the amount of $5,000 for vehicle maintenance as follows. $3,000 to be appropriated to the senior services vehicle line item, and $2,000 to the vehicle maintenance line item for the recreation department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute an amendment to the agreement between the Town of Watertown and New England Golf Carts for the additional carts for the Crestbrook Golf Course.
Second.
Any discussion on that? We've already mentioned it. All in favor, please say aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve a modification to the cell tower lease between the Town of Watertown and Verizon Wireless as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Through the chair. Just get a quick summary for the record of what this entails.
So Verizon has had a 10-year contract with the Town of Watertown. It started back in, I believe, 2012. They had agreed to a 3% increase every year, and it's renewable every, annually. The cost to rent from us at this point is up around $3,900, according to that contract. They are, they came to the town and said they're reconsidering moving these cell towers to somewhere else to get a better deal on the rental space. So the current rate that we're getting now for somebody who would come in new to rent space on any of our water towers is about $2,500. After through some negotiations, they, we had settled on a recommendation of $2,500 to bring them back in line with a 2% escalator that would occur every year with a renewable contract, as a renewable contract.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the reallocation of ARPA funds originally reserved for the upgrade to the police department radio system to be reallocated for the purchase of red dot optics for handguns.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, do you want to give a, just brief the description of what you're asking for?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of town council. Back in the 2022-23 budget, I requested $42,000 to be allocated, allocated for an upgrade to the police department's radio communication operating system, which is still operating on a Microsoft Vista platform, severely out of date. And that operating system would have made our radio communication system viable for about another three or four years before a full systems upgrade would be required. At that time, during the budget process, it was determined that rather than keeping the $42,000 in the operating budget, ARPA funds would be utilized for that operating system upgrade. After the budget season had passed, a grant opportunity through Johanna Hayes' office presented itself. The police department applied for a $3,375,000 grant for a full systems upgrade of our radio communication system. And we were notified just last month that we were awarded that grant. That grant will fully replace our radio communication system, rendering this $42,000 operating system invalid for our current system as the grant will cover a whole new operating system, for a new system. Therefore, we're requesting that that money be reallocated for the purchase of red dot optics for our handguns. Red dot optics use a light emitting diode or an LED to project an aiming point, which is called the dot, onto a lens that the shooter looks through. This is very similar like a heads-up display on your car. If anybody has driven a car that had a heads-up display that displays maybe the speed limit. This is not a projected laser beam onto a target. Only the shooter actually sees this red dot, which is projected onto a glass, piece of glass on top of the handgun. Red dot optics are operationally parallax-free, which means the visible dot remains parallel to the bore of the weapon, no matter what angle the shooter's eye is in relation to the sight. Therefore, the user never has to worry about centering the dot inside of the sight. If you have a proper zero when the dot is on target, so is the shooter. Red dot optics increase shooter confidence by allowing the shooter to focus on the target while keeping both eyes fully open. Using traditional steel sights, the shooter generally has to close one eye and only focus on the sights of the handgun and the actual target, rather than keeping both eyes open, which allows you to still have your peripheral vision and be able to take in everything that's around you. This keeps the officer fully situationally aware at all times. Users can achieve a first-round hit on their actual acquired target faster with greater confidence, thereby increasing public safety and officer safety while reducing collateral damage and liability. It should be noted that the surviving Bristol police officer who fatally wounded the perpetrator in the tragic shooting back in the fall fired only one shot while utilizing a red dot optic on their handgun. It is estimated that the cost of fully outfitting all Watertown Police Department handguns with red dot sight optics will cost $45,114. Our current operating budget has sufficient funds to cover the small overage. Another, what's good about this particular quotes that we have, too, is our current handguns don't even accommodate these sights. We'll have to trade them in for brand-new handguns. And that's all included in this price. We're receiving, receive very good quotes for trade-ins of our current guns. We'll be receiving all new handguns if we're able to do this. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This obviously doesn't include training.
This does not include training, no. This will require three full days of training for each officer.
And is that going to be asked for, you have money to cover that in your line item? Or is that going to be asked for in a different?
No, we're working out the details on that. We're hoping to use a lot of give-back hours that are allowable through the employment contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Gary?
What's the life expectancy of these for the, for the, on the, on the guns or pistols?
For the life of the handgun. So we generally keep our handguns anywhere from 10 to 15 years before trading them in for a newer model. Our current handguns are only five years old right now. So we'd be trading these in. A, a brand-new handgun, for example, we're getting a quote of $429 for a new handgun. And they are going to be giving us between $310 and $325 per handgun that we have right now on a trade-in, depending on the actual condition of each of the handguns. So it's a very, very good value. And we'd kind of be starting the clock over on these new guns.
Anyone else? Turn your mic on. Can you turn your mic on?
The chief was obviously explaining a shoot-don't-shoot situation that all officers don't want to engage in. That it may occur as occurred in Bristol. And obviously, the minimization of collateral damage to anybody within the vicinity of such a shootout, let's say, is not there. Decreasing liability to the town and also eliminating the threat to prevent whoever is being shot with the, or shot with the use of this optic device to terminate the threat.
Yes. That's correct, thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you guys for doing everything that you do.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just to comment that the chief had intended to put this in his current year budget, or the one that we're working on now, so we were hoping that we could take that expense through using this ARPA funds, and that would decrease his budget by that $45,000 as we move forward through the budget process.
Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $7,730 for tax refunds.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a good night.
Recording stopped.